The city council meeting scheduled for March 2nd, 2021 will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
Councilor Rosie.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Mayor Byssell.
Here. Approval of minutes, city council workshop, February 11th, and approval of minutes, city council meeting, February 16th. If no one has any changes or addendums, I'm going to call for a motion that we approve these minutes.
So move.
Motion made by Rosie, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda. We have one addition, it will be number 12, to have the city administrator work on a lease agreement.
Maybe a temporary access agreement.
Yeah. Whatever we need with the city attorney for Scenic Rivers Medical for the Old Evlith Clinic. And if no one else has any additions or deletions, a call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with those changes.
So move.
Motion made by Willis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rosie, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number one. Commission appointments for access board. Paulie Sorkin to the Joint Cable Television Access Board. You have a motion that we approve. Motion made by Rosie, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion?
Just want to thank her for her service.
I tell you, it's hard to find people to step up nowadays. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next appointment, Luke Bourget, is that how you pronounce that?
Jerry.
To the Park Commission.
About Bjorg.
Bjorg, Bjorg, you probably, yeah, that's. Well, also, motion made to appoint Luke, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Rosie, any further discussion?
Just want to thank him for his service as well.
Yeah, like I say, it's, these commissions, I want them, they used to have a stack applications for them. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. At this time, we allow our visitor in the audience five minutes if he wants to speak from the council. Bill? Or you can wait till after the meeting. If not, move on to the consent agenda. Payroll, February 1st through the 15th, and claims, February 2021. So, you're making a motion, approve them?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a support.
Support.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Rosie, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. No public hearings, no unfinished business, and we'll start with new business. Appointment of council member to fill seat vacated by Bradley Hadraba. I'm calling for a motion that we appoint James Purpich to fill the remainder of Bradley's term.
So move.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Rosie, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I don't know about the second one here, but. Retirement notice from Police Chief Tim Koyvenen. Two years. Must be, I must be bad luck, I had two chiefs pull the pin on him, you know?
Yeah, I never thought of it that way, me too.
Yeah, I must be bad luck here. Call for a motion that we accept Chief Koyvenen's notice of retirement and issue him a thanks.
I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to say something too.
Okay.
As everybody knows, Chief Koyvenen is also my brother. And I've been very fortunate to, I was on the council when we hired him. I'm very fortunate to be here now, accepting his retirement. You can't ask, I am so proud of him that it's just unbelievable. I mean, to see the man he's become, he did an excellent job, the great father, and just a great brother of mine, I'm just so proud of him. So, I just want you to know that, and now you can call me and not be crabby on the telephone. And I love you and good luck to everything. So, thank you.
And he's the younger brother, he owes you a place.
Yeah. Well, the problem with this is now I can't say I'm your boss anymore. Yeah, I can. But no, it's been a pleasure working with him, and nothing but professionalism. And I know that our deputy chief and all that's going to step up, he's probably nervous as hell, but he's going to do just the fine job because we have a bunch of great guys below you. So there's no doubt in my mind that, you know, all the shoes will be full. So good luck.
You know, since I made my comeback about 10 years ago, I was really fortunate to have two good police chiefs, and that includes you, Brian, and Tim, who put the welfare of the community and public safety at the top of their list and took care of those things really well. They thought of the community, the people, that was number one. See, I'm very fortunate to have two chiefs work for me that put those priorities in their place, and I'd like to thank, you know, both you guys. I know you've been retired for a while, Brian, but it was greatly appreciated. Tim, I hate to see you go, but, you know, you've been in that business a long time, sometimes you like to change a little bit.
I have something to say, Mayor, but I don't know if you want me to wait till after or not.
You know, our last two chiefs made us look really good, which was very nice.
Did you make a motion, Joe? Did you make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion, but reluctantly to do it, but I made the motion because it's, it's time.
And I will second that motion and ask that you consider a friendly resolution that we waive his 16-week notification of the collective bargaining agreement for special circumstances.
I think that I have to stay away from that one, if I'm not mistaken, Mitch.
Right, yeah, you might be cleaner, I think, might be cleaner to do it as a separate action.
Okay.
Since the motion was made by Joe, just to straight up accept the retirement, maybe just keep it at that.
Unless you want to rescind your motion.
You know what? John can. I'll rescind my motion because I think my brother knows how I feel. And if you guys would like to do it amongst yourselves, then I'll step back and be like the proud brother that I am right now.
John, would you like to cover that?
I will make the motion.
Okay, and Brian supports it?
Yes, sir.
But I also would like to throw some butter on.
Absolutely.
I remember when you started, and our relationship may be a little bit more feel related because we see each other in action. And there are certain calls that I'll always remember, with you being there, and I'll never have that moment, the help that's always there, the outstanding interaction leadership. We're losing big guy to the mines, like the way that things turn over, and I'm sort of used to watching good people leave, that's occurred. However, I did enjoy our service together. And I hope that as much as you would personally, I think that would still come back. But yes, congratulations, and I hope it's still out really good. Woo, for you, Joe. I would just look forward to that.
Jackie, you have Brian's amendment to the motion in there too, then?
Do you got it?
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I just want to say congratulations and thank you for your service, and best of luck moving forward.
Yes, sir.
So we just make sure the record is clear then, so you offer a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Are you offering that, Brian, a friendly amendment?
Well, I assumed that John in his original motion included that.
Okay.
So then I just.
We just want to make sure the record is clear.
Right.
Yes.
So I would have just supported John's motion in its entirety.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three. Authorized posting for police chief position for agreement between the City of Evlith and United States Steel, Paper and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union. In behalf of 68, whoa, is that a mouthful?
That's a long one.
Call for a motion that we authorize the posting for the chief's position within that bargaining unit?
So move.
Motion made by Willis, we have a support. Support by Rosie, any further discussion? How long do we have to lead that posting up?
Seven days.
Seven days, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number four, a letter from Councilor Willis regarding Fire Department Shared Services Committee. Want to elaborate, or should we just accept the letter as it is written?
I thought you did an excellent job on it.
Yep.
Right to the point.
Exactly.
You didn't mix words, it's just how it should have been wrote. And I would, I would so move that we accept that and send it.
I will second that.
You know, it's, you know, you guys serving on a committee too, it's not an easy thing to try to merge these departments, you know? It gets the personalities, political, you know what I mean, it's a tough deal.
Yeah, and patience is one of the, one of the things that may lack in some of us, but we have to keep reminding ourselves that this process has only been underway for a little over a year, and we lost most of that year with COVID-19, so. Yeah, I just, I'm looking forward to better days ahead on the Shared Services Committee, I think, I think once we get the hold of things here, things will move forward quite nicely.
Well, you know, like I say, that COVID thing, it set everything back, you know, changed how we do business, but like I say, I think we're on the upside now, see some light at the end of the tunnel. Any further discussion? Steph, did I get a motion and a support? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number five, temporary license for Ted McHugh for residential driveway on Evlith, Virginia Airport, Sky Harbor Sea Plane Base property.
Well, you know, he's been cutting grass and plowing, and as long as he keeps doing that, I would so move that we give him a temporary license.
Do we have a support?
You have support.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Rosie, you know, it's, it's tough, that stuff has been there for half a century plus, you know what I mean? But the rules have changed, but the use and activities haven't. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number six, travel policy meal reimbursement update. We updated it coming from 1996, it was overdue to be freshened up, I guarantee you that.
Well, you know, it was funny, after we were talking about it, and I'm sitting there going, who in their right mind thought we'd be paying $5 for a cup of coffee nowadays? You know, or $2 for bottled water, which they're both billion-dollar businesses right now. So at $7, you can have a half a piece of toast and a cup of coffee and still have to dig in your pocket.
No tip.
Yeah, no tip, so I think we're right there with it, I mean, you know, somebody goes away for schooling to benefit themselves, to make themselves better for the town of Evlith, should not have to sit there going, I wonder where I'm going to eat for $3 tonight. I mean, seriously. You know, like us, I go to a meeting, I got to go to Dollar Store, get chips and pop for $2, grab change out of my pocket, nobody raised ours yet.
What was in the truck seats?
I got french fries from last week.
You know, you could even spear a free meal off of somebody, but they frown on that too.
Yeah, you can't even, because then you're buying off.
Yep.
So you can't do anything.
And there's so much more training now for municipal employees than there ever was, too, that's another thing.
Yeah, I don't think this is out of the ballpark at all, I think it's right in there, and I think it's.
Shouldn't cost them money to go get trained for the benefit of the community.
You know, it's good enough to go in with their time and learning and.
And this is not a line or unusual, this goes right in line with any other city.
That's all for as far as how they take care of their employees that are applying training, so. It's not like it's the work for Evlith, we're giving us $100 for lunch.
A lesson you draw. Hey, you're out of body work. Well, also move that we.
All right.
We change these.
Accept the new policy?
Yes.
We have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Willis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number seven, Spring 21 Refuge Collection and Yard Waste Pickup Schedule. Jerry, you got anything to add to that, or?
Just last fall, we switched to the two-week schedule, we went out two weeks from four weeks, and we just do the late schedule for the two weeks and it worked out. Excellent.
You get the same volume?
We're just asking that we'll stick with that three-week schedule, and we'll be on H1, so. Anybody that has stuff, we'll have time to get it done.
Okay. We've had a lot of people say thank you for staying open till 6 o'clock.
That was a big deal.
Because there's a lot of people that don't get home till 4:30, 5:00. So that was just great.
That was a good trade-off.
Yeah.
For that. No one has any more discussion, call for a motion that we adopt the Spring 21 Refuge Collection and Yard Waste Pickup Schedule. Motion made by Rosie, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, resolution authorizing the preparation of plans, specifications and field work by benchmark engineering for 2022 Roosevelt Avenue, Douglas Avenue Utility Replacement Project. Got anything to say on that, Jerry?
This just keeps them all moving, gets benchmarked early enough to get all plans done. The colonies already, I handle their plans for 2022, and we aren't just staying.
Okay.
Motion with that.
Call for a motion that we adopt this resolution?
So move.
Motion made by Rosie, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Willis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Authorized Director of Public Works to call for quotes for 2021 curb and sidewalk replacement. And we are still getting money from the county on that too, Jerry?
Yeah, and we got the upgrade last year for $15, and then we're playing with that again.
Oh, nice.
I'll tell you, the county's been a real good partner with us.
Yep.
On that. Lucky, you know, lucky to have the people there that we have. I'll call for a motion that we authorize the Director of Public Works to call for quotes for 2021 curb and sidewalk replacement.
So move.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do you have a support? Support by Rosie, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number 10, authorize staff to submit a request to MPCA for priority scoring and placement on a clean water revolving fund project priority list for stimulus funding for the Roosevelt Avenue, Douglas Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we authorize staff to submit this request.
So move.
Motion made by Willis, we have a support. Support. Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Authorize staff to submit a request to the Minnesota Department of Health for priority scoring and placement on the drinking water revolving loan fund project priority list for stimulus funding for Roosevelt Avenue and Douglas Avenue Water Replacement Project. If no one has any questions, or Public Works, or Allen, then I'll call, ask for a motion that we authorize staff?
So move.
Motion made by Rosie, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And item number 12, authorize the city administrator to enter into a lease agreement with Scenic Rivers Medical for occupying the Old Evlith Clinic. And Jackie, you're just going to work with Mitch and Keith?
Yes, yep, and then you'll have a sign with it, so.
Okay, if we have to have a special meeting to approve that, we can't.
If you're approving it based on Mitch and I work down there.
Then we're good, okay. Anybody have any questions, or?
Are we terming this a temporary access agreement, or does it make any difference?
Well, I think if you, so in good spirits, if Scenic Rivers wants to temporarily get into our clinic and let right up quickly, and so I think it'd be a temporary access agreement, we have to do it anyway, and we're on this, which is probably a good avenue while we're working on a temporary.
Because they're anxious to get in there for the vaccinations.
Because of all, it's to get the insurance and place.
Mayor, I would move that we allow our city administrator to move forward and work with Scenic Rivers Health Services for, toward a temporary access agreement as specified.
You're making that a motion, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rosie, any further discussion? I think it's a good need for the community and a good service to have that accessibility, probably for the area.
Well, I think it's going to turn into a good friendship between, and hopefully, knock on wood, we will have a clinic back in town, and it should help everybody.
Definitely moving forward with health.
You know?
That was good to hear, you know, it's, because I know we had some conversations, but the COVID crisis kind of stopped a lot of things, and that was one of them.
It shows that there is light at the end of the tunnel, and things are starting to come around a little bit, and I really think it's good for the City of Evlith.
I do too. If no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That moves us to council presentation, committee reports. I don't know if we had any commission meetings or anything.
We had a, we had a rock board meeting last week, and this was, we got a $106,000 grant from the state of Minnesota. And, you know, everybody says, oh, boy, that's a lot of money. Well, it helps because we're $247,000 in the hole up to date, so that just tells you what kind of money that these businesses and places are down. You know, so we get $106, but we're still down, you know, $150,000. So it doesn't solve your problems, but will help you get along. And I just wanted to pass that off to the people so they could get just a little bit of an idea of how much these businesses have really lost. You know? Because a lot of you right off the bat are going to say, oh, hell, $100,000, that's a lot of money. No. It should have been $250,000.
In normal times.
In normal times.
It's a big deal, but.
They've been totally shut down, totally everything, the only one that goes through that door is the mailman every day bringing bills. And that's it, and that's for every other business around. You know, and even the businesses that are open, except for a couple of them, aren't making that much like they used to because everybody's staying home, which, you know, we're told they should be. So hopefully, with everybody listening and starting to turn around, and there'll be some normalcy back eventually.
Well, with the clinic giving vaccinations, that might bring more peace of mind.
Yeah.
People getting out, more of a safety factor too. I think it's somewhere close because, like I say, I know that's been a real concern, and there's been people driving a long way.
I think some of the people in Evlith will be happy if they can get started, you know, in a couple of weeks to start getting some shots. I see John Strug is going to start.
He's already started.
They're starting, and then if we get that going, you know, then they could just get it right in Evlith here.
Yeah, he's, he's been going pretty steady here for about a week or so.
Good.
Then you got, what, the second round, I think, of shots? And that's what, a couple of weeks out, they got that. I think there's a new vaccine, it's only a one-shot.
Yep, Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything what, how that's been going, but.
They were just wheeling it out today, and hopefully this afternoon, they were going to start, you know, giving people shots.
You know, it makes you wonder, the way they used to roll out those flu vaccines, pretty darn orderly, like an assembly line, why this was such a, kind of a haphazard, and a lot of stumbling blocks?
Oh, Trump's fault. I had to say it, somebody was going to say it.
Man, I don't know. Anybody else have anything on any committee reports? I know you had just been kind of quiet since the last meeting. Other than one workshop, I really don't have anything to add, other than welcoming the warm weather here. We'll go to, Chief, you got anything to add? I know you're waiting. It's interesting.
Mayor and council, honorable Mayor Byssolovich, Councilors Willis, Koyvenen, and Rosie. And this goes out to our whole entire staff, Administrator Jackie, our Deputy Clerk Steph, Public Works Director Jerry, Engineer Al, Attorney Mitch, it, and particularly the other rest of the city, and particularly my department's staff as well. It has truly been an honor to serve as the Chief of Police for the City of Evlith and end my career in our hometown, for my hometown. I told myself I'm not going to get choked up here today. After almost 30 years of service, I want to thank each and every one of you for all you've done for me, the department, and our entire community. You are all professionals and have made my time here special, and I feel a strong sense of accomplishment as I leave. I know this notice came out quick as I'm closing this chapter of my life with everyone, with the new one starting around the corner. So once again, thank you for all you've done. And also thank the community and the surrounding communities for all your support of me and our department and law enforcement in general. I know these are difficult times, but to see and hear the support of our community is refreshing and needed to hear especially of the criticism law enforcement is taking around the state and around the country. I want to give a special thank you to all those who are protecting and serving in law enforcement. I appreciate, I appreciate all that you do and have done to assist the Evlith Police Department and the City of Evlith. You will be in my thoughts and in my prayers every day. Hold your heads high, and I would remember you are making positive difference. Lastly, to my family. My very patient wife, Rachel. My kids, Ashley and Erin, stepchildren, Claire and Logan. My brother, counselor. My sister, Margie, mother, and the rest of my immediate family. For all your support and encouragement over the years, especially in the good times and the turbulent times. I know it wasn't always easy to deal with me.
That's a mouthful.
Even when I was a little moody or stressed out, but thank you, I look forward to our new chapter. Thanks to everyone, God bless and take care.
Thank you, Chief. Jackie, do you have anything to add?
Well, so Tim Roy gets the last word. I'll have my conversation with the 101, I miss our morning compression sessions and everything that made Evlith really great to be here, and I'll go with this, so, you're the most excited.
Steph, you got anything to add? Mitch?
I just want to do my very best for Chief, it's been an absolute pleasure working with him over all these years, and I, on behalf of the firm, and I know my attorney, city prosecutor, who's worked very closely with Chief for many years. It's been a real pleasure and a true professional, and a real friend to him, so, wishing him the best.
Jerry, you got anything to add?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to help him through that part. He has been professional this whole time, and the city was better with you here, and made the seal, we were, we gave a lot of laughs, and I thank you for your, your years of our community, so it's a tough battle. Sometimes when I think I got it tough, I just look at your plate, and I got it pretty easy, so, thank you.
Ellen, you got anything to add?
Nothing to add, ask the lawyer, sir.
John, you got anything?
No butter left for him. I do, I do have a wife question that's been put to me several times in the last few meetings by individuals that are concerned over our, we're going to have a yard sale.
I don't see why not.
Brian's working on it.
I think it would be a great thing.
I would mention something and I knew that you were on board with that.
I remember that.
And Tim was already, so... I would smile at a lot of people's faces.
I think you can easily comply with their social distancing guidelines on a yard sale or garage sale like they have.
We're working on it.
Good.
That's the funnest day in Evlith to drive.
Yeah, I gotta really...
Well, you're turning left, but they go right.
Really gotta be awake when you're driving around.
I stay out of the alleys.
Go to the lake and stay there. Anything else, John?
No, I'm good.
Joe?
No, I, I'm good.
Brian, how about you?
No, thank you.
I was just gonna say, you know, one thing when you're in a small community like this, knowing everybody, you know, like the council and the staff, it's more like friends than, you know, an employer-employee relationship. And that way it makes it a lot easier to help the presidents, find solutions to problems. And I mean, everybody's an ambassador. And we're really fortunate to have a staff and a city council in this town who can get that stuff done and prioritize things for the people. And I, I think we are thankful. We, we're losing a big piece of the puzzle here, but I think we've got a good replacement coming up to fill that void. On that note, I'll shut up. Does anybody from the audience have anything to say? Bill?
Well, I think we have a great, great gentleman that served the city of Evlith extremely well. A great man, great delegate. And I hate to say it, but you're worth with me in some situations. Great, great guy. So, I wish you happiness, luck, and you're still living there, but, but... Cheer, cheer. Anyway, you're a great guy.
Well, Tim, I'm just gonna say good luck and I'm gonna miss ya. You said you were gonna stick it out as long as I do.
Yeah, I wish too, I do. One more term and I'll stick around. Oh yeah, look who's Bailey.
Yeah. Well, I'll leave it on that note and we'll adjourn the meeting.